Granberry City Council Regular Meeting to order at 6:00 PM Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023. We are at Granberry City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street in Granberry, Texas. And now I'd like Pastor Kevin Spencer from Center Point Church, if you would lead us in prayer, sir. Please rise.
Thank you for having me. If you would, join me in a word of prayer. Lord, we thank you for this day that you've given us. We take this time to honor you, ask for your grace and your strength and your wisdom as we lead your people and the men and women that govern this city. Thank you that there would be your help in all agendas brought tonight, that we treat each other with respect as humans. Thank you for your love, thank you for loving us, we love you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir, appreciate that. Now, if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag and to the Texas Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state and one entity.
Well, thank you all very much. Thank you for coming tonight. I thought we were going to have a lot of fifth graders. Well, for those of you who didn't see that, it was a good one. Thank you, sir. We have some proclamations, and I want to go ahead and come to the front and make these proclamations, and then we'll move into the recognition part of our meeting as well. I'll tell you, we have our police and our fire. You know, I look down the line here, I see a councilman that's also a volunteer fire department, I see a lady on this end that's also, you know, from a police family. Why don't you guys all and ladies, let's all join down there to proclaim these people, okay?
Like everybody?
Yes, like everybody. Yeah.
Everybody?
Yes, Jersey, everybody.
You get to do this once a year.
Yeah, we get to do this once a year. I think that it's more than appropriate. Is there, is there something about the two guys to my left that you don't want us? I just want, I just want, there is, yeah. Good, Jeff? Okay. Going with the proclamation for the International Firefighters Day, reads, "Whereas International Firefighters Day is observed each year on May 4th to honor and remember past firefighters who have lost their lives while serving their communities, to express gratitude to those that have served in this line of work and to show support and appreciation for those who presently serve. And whereas, at a moment's notice, firefighters are quick to respond to uncertain situations to mitigate danger and combat the threat of destructive fire to protect individuals, families, and the economic being of our community. Whereas, the demands of firefighting are accompanied by both personal and physical tolls that all firefighters knowingly accept while risking their lives to protect the lives of others. And whereas, following International Firefighters Day, Friends of Memorial Lane will be holding the ceremony on Saturday, May 6th to recognize the firefighters of the year from each of the nine volunteer fire stations and invite the community to join. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Jim Jarrett, Mayor of the City of Granberry, do hereby proclaim May 4th, 2023 as International Firefighters Day in Granberry." All, and I urge all the citizens to show support and appreciation to firefighters who protect our lives and property so diligently throughout the year. The Friends of Memorial Lane encourage all citizens to wear red and blue ribbons on this day, representing fire and water, and ask that all stop at noon to say a prayer for those who freely give their time and service to the community, and remember those who have given the ultimate sacrifice fighting fires. I further call upon the citizens of Granberry to observe Saturday, May 6th, 2023 as a day in which the community will unite in showing our appreciation to the brave men and women who serve our community as volunteer firefighters. And this too is given under my hand and the seal of the City of Granberry on the second day of May, 2023. Jim Jarrett, Mayor, thank you. This is an outstanding group of young men and young women, and we are truly honored to have you here, and we're truly honored to have such fine volunteer fire department. It's outstanding, and everybody in our community knows that. They got another raise, I see. Yeah. Thank you, thank you very much. Vickers? Let's see. Oh, I'm on the exit. It doesn't matter with me. You got this extra 50 pounds on here. Okay. Let me go with this. Whereas Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15 as Police Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas members of the Granberry Police Department dedicate their lives and careers to strengthen the safety and security of the City of Granberry, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and the sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the Granberry Police Department increasingly provide this vital public service, or unceasingly provide this vital public service, I now therefore be it resolved that I, Jim Jarrett, Mayor of the City of Granberry, do hereby proclaim the week of May 14th through the 20th, 2023 as National Police Week in Granberry. And urge our citizens to join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their unfaithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to our communities and have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon the citizens of Granberry to observe Monday, May 15th, 2023 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duty. Let us also recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. This is given under my hand, and I want to make sure that all of us are aware that we're invited to Memorial Park Saturday, May 13th at 10:00 AM at the law enforcement site for a ceremony with the, that's put on by the Memorial Way Group. So congratulations, all of you gentlemen, our appreciation, our heartfelt appreciation. Thank you. [applause] the police, the fire, and to, you know, in general, just city staff. This is, uh, this is, this is the highlight of the week, there's no question about it. I have one other proclamation today, and I think this is symbolic in that while you see these young men and young ladies that have become mature adults and are providing this service to our community, we also have a number of people that are coming up in our, our community. So I have a proclamation for this. Whereas Lemonade Day is an innovative program dedicated to teaching school-aged children across the nation entrepreneurship by establishing a lemonade stand, being attacked. I thought there were going to be fifth graders here, I really did, I was looking forward to it. No, no, you cannot. Well, I was, uh, I was, whereas the Granberry Chamber of Commerce, working in partnership with Interbank Granberry, the Granberry Independent School District, and with assistance from local businesses and organizations are helping fifth-grade students learn about business, financial education, and being a part of the community through this free program. And whereas the young entrepreneurs who participate in the program learn life skills through practical learning, the students earn money and are taught to spend a little, save a little, and share a little, donating a portion of their profits to the local charity of their choice. And whereas the City of Granberry commends the sponsors, organizers, and participants of this innovative program and extends best wishes for a successful and rewarding event. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jim Jarrett, Mayor of the City of Granberry, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May 20, 2023 as Lemonade Day in Granberry, and encourage the community to purchase a cup of lemonade from one of the young entrepreneurs to demonstrate how our community cares for the future of our youth. It's given under my hand, the seal of the City of Granberry, the second day of May, 2023. Jim Jarrett. This is what it's all about. Thank you. Thank you. that we can ever do to promote the youth in this community, keep us in mind, we would love to help. Let's now go to recognition. City Council, City Manager, to ensure encouraging statements to recognize city staff. Do we have encouraging statements tonight? Any recognition?
I'd like to interrupt the program to bring you a couple of announcements. So listen, this morning I was able to attend an event at the Conference Center that the tourism team put together as an appreciation for all the folks and the volunteers, all the partners, stakeholders with tourism. It was an incredible event, it was so awesome to see all these people encouraged and rewarded for their efforts, and I would like for, to give Tammy recognition for a job well done on that deal. Wow. Outstanding. You know me, I tear up pretty easy, and I was teared up the entire morning, just blown away at the gratitude that I have for all those people. I mean, there are so many people pulling together to make Granberry the fantastic community that it is, and we were able to recognize just a small part of them today. And so, Tammy, great job. And also would like for you to share with us your recent award on the, on the latest prize for our community that you were responsible for as well.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. The event this morning was crazy good, and our theme, as you know, was sweet on tourism. So our staff has been eating candy for two days, so we're a little wired, but it's been, it's been great, so thank you for being there. I did want to share this award, many of you may have read it in the newspaper, but we are thrilled to announce that Granberry has been awarded Best Destination for Foodies by the People's Choice Award 2023 by the Texas Travel Awards in a statewide competition. This is really exciting because Granberry was the smallest community in, in the awards, and we were up against Austin, Fredericksburg, and San Antonio, and I would have told you that we could not have beat these three great cities, because I go to all those cities for food as well, but the difference is that our community is united in tourism and our community votes, and this was a popular choice award. Visit Granberry has won two awards in the past with the same organization as the Best Visitor Center and the Best Philanthropic Effort, which was the Winner Guest Goosebump Jump, but this award is more special because it was voted on by the people. So we were in great company with this. The other winners, let's see, let me go back. The Texas Travel Awards shine a spotlight on the most exciting, innovative, and inviting places around the state. The 2023 winners represent uniquely Texas, places and experience worthy of any traveler's itinerary. So the Texas Travel Awards asked the public to help decide four categories, Best Destination in Arts and Culture, Families, Foodies, and Outdoor Adventures. Sixty other categories were split into two sections with statewide winners and winners by three population breakdowns and scored by an elite panel of judges that included travel industry professionals, travel journalists, and even touring musicians. So South Padre Island took home the top award for Destination of the Year for a second year in a row, so that's on our radar now. So all of these winners will be featured in the 2023 Travel Awards Magazine coming out this summer, and we will receive our actual award at the TACVB Annual Conference this summer, and I can't remember where it is right now, oh, Bryan College Station. So we just wanted to share the good news and let you know that these awards are so important to the community because it's a lot of free coverage for us, and wanted to share that with you, so thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations to Granberry for an awesome job. Again, people pulling together, rowing the boat in the same direction and making things happen. It's just great to see the momentum and just keep it going. And you know, someday we're going to get that cultural arts designation, and we're going to be right in their grill to win that award when that comes around, so stand by for better things to happen. Also, I wanted to brag about a situation. It was about 40, 45 days ago, I was driving down the highway to some training with Council Member Stephen Vale, and we got talking about the litter in our community, and Steve came up with a great idea, and, and normally you don't plan things with a shorter window, but we've got some amazing staff, Cherie and Michael Ross and others pulled together to pull off a great event, and I would like to turn it over to Stephen Vale to talk about that from his perspective.
All right, thank you, Chris. We had a great turnout for the first Granberry cleanup on Saturday, April 22nd. We had about 150 people come to Hewlett Park, and about 50 people, mostly students, gather at the high school. I see many of you here tonight, I think, well, my cleanup partner left the building, Brian Bondi, but he and I were out with, with Chris on 377 picking up all sorts of things. And to the person who left a half gallon of Blue Bell ice cream on the side of the road, shame on you. Well, I had this idea, and after speaking with the City of Crowley, Tech Dot and Chris Kaufman, we brought the idea to Granberry. And I used to say when I was working, an idea with no action is just that, it's an idea. So as Chris said, we've got a great staff here, and we took action. So roadside cleanups like this have been all, done all over the state and mostly partnered with Keep Texas Beautiful. Our utility billing staff and communication team got the ball rolling, making people aware of the event, obtaining vests, gloves, trash bags, and Cherie got a bunch of grabbers so we could all save our old backs picking up trash, and created online registration and a way to watch a mandatory safety video before we deploy it out across the city. The Lake Granberry Conference Center provided the sound system at the event. Parks and Recreation coordinated the cleanup of trash bags that we had collected and left on the side of the road around town. Students picked up trash at or near the high school. Other participants cleaned the roadside of dozens of locations from the racetrack on Highway 144, and we had a team from Classic Chevrolet that went all the way just past Matressville on 377 picking up litter. So leading the, leading up the event, Cherie Westlin is here this evening, thank you, and visited with a whole bunch of civic organizations in town and got people registered on the spot. Chuck Lacata, thank you Chuck, he was the emcee for our event, and we weren't sure how many people would show up, but Carla has a great video to show you exactly what happened that day, so watch your monitor.
Much for taking time out of your Saturday to be here with us this morning. I'm absolutely overwhelmed with the turnout. This has absolutely exceeded my expectations.
One, two, three, Clean Granberry! [whistle]
Communication Department put that together. So in closing, just thanks to all the people who helped organize this event. As you saw, we actually picked up a ton of trash, and as Michael Ross says, no, not a ton of trash, actually a ton of trash, 2,000 pounds of, of litter was collected along the city. So one of the steps, next steps is organizing a Keep Granberry Beautiful Committee so we can work more closely with Keep Texas Beautiful on projects like this one and many others. So this project, in my mind, was a perfect example of when I say that we are a community in unity. So congratulations to everyone with the city and the staff for making this event come to, come to life, and thank all of you who participated in it, supported it, and worked on it. Thank you.
It is outstanding. Others?
I have one more.
Oh, for me, that's enough.
Counsel? Anyone? Well, I know that you hear all of us asking, ask you to participate in our city government, and one of the ways to participate is to let our representatives know how you feel. And I just want to read a short letter, I think we talked about last week, some of the issues that we are seeing in the Texas Legislature this week that really would be detrimental to home real cities, I mean, very, very detrimental to home real cities. We are under attack, if you would. And one of the bills out there is Senate Bill 369, which literally would de-annex half of the city. Nice one, a really nice one. Here's a letter from Mr. Brian Birdwell. Thank you for writing to express your concerns, it was addressed to me. Thank you for writing to express your concerns with SB 369. I know you're keeping the best interests of the people in Granberry in mind, and I appreciate your efforts. And here's the important part. I have spoken to City Manager Chris Kaufman and am very well aware of the impacts on bond repayment and other aspects. I've offered an amendment to Senator Campbell that would make the bill supportable per my discussion with Chris and the Waco City Manager. If my amendment does not go on, I will oppose the bill. Thank you for bringing the matter to my attention, Senator Brian Birdwell. Mr. Kaufman and staff put together that letter to go to Mr. Birdwell, and it was a very compelling letter with the, with the appropriate maps, the math, the spreadsheet on the back of it. It's one of these things where, gee, if you say no to this, you're not listening, and Senator Brian Birdwell is listening, please help out, help us with anything that you see a concern with. We have some things tonight to talk about short-term rentals. Short-term rentals are under attack as well down in the, at the Texas State Capitol this year, in a big way. So I recognize you, I recognize the staff, it was, it was an outstanding job, thank you all. Yeah, good job over here. So we're ready to move to item number five. It's Public Comments on Agenda Items for Non-Public Hearing Agenda Items. I don't have anyone who has signed up to speak on 61, 62, 63, or 74, and those are the only ones that are non-public hearing items. I do have Mr. LaCroix who signed up for 7.1, and we will ask that you speak when we get to 7.1, if that works for you. Okay? No one signing up for any public comments? We'll go to the Consent Agenda. All items on the Consent Agenda are routine or previously discussed and will be approved with one motion. However, should a member of the City Council wish to discuss any item, said item may be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered under the Deliberation Agenda. Anyone want to remove an item? Hear a motion to approve the Consent Agenda? Mr. Rodriguez?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the Consent Agenda as stated.
Okay.
Second.
Good. A motion has been made and seconded by Mr. Corrigan. All in No, I'm good. Deliberation Agenda, 7.1, public hearing. There will be a public hearing on this, I'll call for that after we have the staff presentation. Consider the following request of Jason Brett to, one, authorize the City Manager to execute a Facilities Improvement Agreement, FIA 23-02, for Saratoga Phase 2B and Hurricane Fly Extension by and between the City of Granbury and Legends Land Development, CJB Development, and CRB Asset Management for the construction of water, wastewater, storm drainage, street improvements, park improvements, street lights, street sign, and electric infrastructure. The approximate cost of the construction is $11,344. The developer has selected a payment and performance bond which covers 120% of the cost of the facilities. And, number two, final plat, a 24.949 acre tract of the Joshua Minute Survey, abstract number 445, as lots 22 through 25, and common area E, Block 10. Lots 1 through 51 and common area F, Block 11. Lots 1 through 6, Block 12. Lots 16 through 32, Block 13, and common area G. Block 20 of the Saratoga Phase 2B addition. The property is located south of the intersection of Saratoga Boulevard and East Highway 377. It's PL 2022-02. Mr. Kaufman?
That was a mouthful to read. Thank you. This has been the next phase of the Saratoga subdivision, to put it simply. I'll turn it over to our Director of Community Development, Kara Wowie, please let you give us a briefing.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This next slide here shows the aerial with the site outlined in blue teal on your map. The site is approximately 25 acres, Zoned R7, and as stated, the request would be a final plat for 78 single-family lots. This map shows the actual zoning in yellow of the site. And let me back up here a second. So, what you can see on this slide is the already developed Saratoga development on the left. That area has been pretty much finished out. Saratoga Boulevard splits that site, comes down towards the south to connect into this new phase. Again, the zoning map, and this is the north half of the proposed lot. That street extension, the lines that curve up towards the north, that's Preakness Drive, it would eventually connect to the 377. It serves as a type of collector through this subdivision. This is the south portion of the subdivision, and the street to the south is Hurricane Fly, which would extend to the west eventually someday to James, and to the east to Fall Creek Highway, which is part of this plat shown on this next slide, connecting there to those lots of the Phase 2B and all the way over to Fall Creek Highway. This is the perfunctuary slides or pages of the plat. The plat meets all of the requirements and conforms to the amended preliminary plat. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the plat by a 6-0 vote on April 10th. Staff is also recommending approval, and in this project also includes the FIA Facilities Improvement Agreement. And this slide shows your voting options for the final plat as well as for the FIA. Missed that one up there. You may approve or deny the FIA should be the first consideration on your motion. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have some.
I hear no questions, so I will go ahead and open the public hearing, and I have Mr. Joe LaCroix asked to speak at this point in time. If you come and give us your name and address, I'd be appreciated. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, members, council, good evening. My name is Joe LaCroix. I'm with Barrett Hampton and Brown Engineering. Our office is located at 6300 Ridgely Place in Fort Worth, Texas. Ms. Kira did a fantastic job in giving a synopsis. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have for the project, otherwise we're here in support of it on behalf of the developer.
Thank you. Counsel, anyone have questions? We've been through this, no? Mr. Wadley? Do you know? No? Mr. LaCroix? Thank you for coming now. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Any no questions, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing on 7.1. Counsel, are there other questions, or do we have a motion that anyone would like to make on this? Nobody wants to read this? You can make a motion as read.
Mayor, can you just go ahead and read it all again for us?
Just kidding. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve as stated.
Do I hear a second? Motion made by Mr. Rodriguez.
Which one are we doing? FIA.
Just to clarify, the FIA and for the final plat.
Okay.
Right.
So, make a motion for approval for the FIA and the final plat.
As stated in the deliberation agenda item 7.1. Correct? Mr. Corrigan, seconds. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. It passes 6-0. We'll move to 7.2, Public Hearing. Consider adopting ordinance number 23-34 approving a request of Linda Jordan for a specific use permit to allow short-term rental residential unhosted in a residential 8400R 8.4 zoning district. The property is addressed as 322 West Bridge Street. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Ms. Wowie again.
Thank you. Again, this slide is your introductory slide with the aerial showing the site location on Bridge outlined in teal. This site in 2019 did have an approved three-year term for two-bedroom. This request would reestablish that use. And this slide shows the zoning. The surrounding area is comprised of single-family residential uses as well as a bed and breakfast in the nearby vicinity. The current use is a long-term rental. Proposal would, of course, change that. This is the context map. The outlined sites show nearby short-term rentals, of one which is across the street from this site. The property improvements are shown on this site plan. The house extends down to the lower bottom portion of the drawing. There's some accessory buildings, a garage to the west side, and to the north or up on the drawing is a parking area with four parking spaces. There are, of course, only two required for the proposed use, but extra spaces are allowed. Those little diagonals around the parking spaces show proposed screening with shrubs. That's a requirement of your proposed conditions to screen the parking suite. It's also required to be screened by the ordinance. These slides show the floor plan demonstrating that there are indeed only two bedrooms in the home, and these are on the upstairs or the right drawing there. This is a picture of the site. The S U P criteria for your consideration includes these four items on this slide. Is the use harmonious and compatible to the location? Again, as previously stated, it's in a single-family and short-term rental area of the community. Are the activities requested associated with the proposed use? They are. Is the nature of the use reasonable? The site is in an HPO area, which is part of our policy documents and plans, and for the use, there are special standards and city codes to which it will comply. And are there other measures that would secure the property? And we mentioned that the parking spaces will be screened and adequate parking will be provided. The next few slides are additional criteria. Some of these repeat what's already been stated regarding the parking and compatibility, that the use will fit in the neighborhood. There is also some of this criteria speak to standards of certificate of occupancy and building permits, standards of performance and requirements within the zoning ordinance and the city code. So, that's what those speak to. We also provided public notice via mail to 24 property owners as well as in the newspaper. We did receive two letters in favor and no letters received in opposition to the request. The Planning Commission recommended by unanimous 6-0 vote, these conditions, counsel to approve with a one-year term, subject to the site plan and the floor plan, a maximum of two bedrooms, and the screening that was spoke to, the screening of the parking area, as well as our three other standard conditions, that the permit be subject to the supplemental standards of the zoning ordinance, and other city code requirements as are stated in the city code, and then a statement of violation. Staff had the same recommendations, and these are your voting options. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, have questions? You see no questions, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. I don't have anyone who's signed up. Okay? I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Counsel, comments? Questions? Do you hear a motion?
Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Birdwell?
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2334 as presented.
I second that.
Seconded by Mr. Wadley. Motion is made by Ms. Birdwell. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. It passes 6-0. 7.3, Consider Adopting Ordinance Number 23-35 Approving a Request of Connie Ross and Carrie Sturdavant for a Specific Use Permit to Allow Short-Term Rental Residential Unhosted in a Residential 7,000R-7 zoning district. The property is addressed as 216 South Travis Street. Mr. Kaufman?
Ms. Wowie? Thank you.
Thank you. This slide again is the aerial showing that the site is outlined in that blue teal color on Travis Street, and the use is nearby along Travis Street, our single-family. There are some existing short-term rentals in the area. We'll get to that slide here in a second. The use to the west, there is a utility building. The request as stated is for a short-term rental. This is for two bedrooms, and several years back, there was an S U P on this site, again with the two bedrooms in the existing residence. That's remained unchanged. This shows your zoning with the residential zoning district. A portion of the utility building is zoned for commercial purposes. That's that pink color. The residential is the yellow. And this slide shows the surrounding nearby bed and breakfast or short-term rentals outlined in pink, and there's some other colors. I think they broke them down to show the commercial, the hosted as well as the unhosted bed and breakfast. So, that shows where those are. This is the site plan. There is adequate parking on-site for two vehicles to park in that driveway, and they're not blocking one another. And this is a blow-up of that, next to the garage there is where they would park. This is a real light color of the floor plan, but demonstrates that there are only two bedrooms in the facility, in the house. That photograph from the front. And the criteria, this is much like the item we've already heard. The criteria is required to be answered in a positive fashion, and all of the criteria does that. I should speak to the parking that's already screened with existing shrubs and buildings, so we don't have a condition for headlight screening. Again, these are the same that you've heard in the past and incorporated into the staff report as well. We did send notice to surrounding property owners. There were nine public notices in this situation, and we also sent notice to the newspaper, and it was published. We received no responses in favor, and we received two letters in opposition to the request. The Planning Commission recommended approval with a 6-0 vote in April, and these are the conditions recommended. Subject to a one-year term, the site plan as well as the floor plan, maximum of two bedrooms, and then the last three are our standard conditions, speaking to the zoning ordinance, city code requirements, and enforcement provisions. And staff had the same recommendations. These are your voting options. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, questions? See no questions here, I'm gonna call a public hearing, open the public hearing. We have no one who's signed up. Anyone speak? I'm going to close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion if there's any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the S U P as presented.
Mr. Vale makes a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Wadley approves. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. It passes 6-0. Number 7.4, Consider Authorizing the City Manager to Execute Sale of the City of Granbury vacant tract of surplus property to the adjacent property owner per Texas Local Government Code Section 272.001.B1 and C1 and 2. The property is located 150 Crawford Court. Mr. Kaufman?
I'd like to take a moment before I turn it over to Assistant City Manager Rick Crownover, just to say that, you know, leave it to the developing public to help find ways to be efficient. And this is what this is. We've got a stranded piece of land that will benefit a developer if they're able to buy it by legal rights, they can do that. So, I'll turn it over to Rick and let him walk you through the process. But thank y'all for finding this, and hopefully, make it work.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Mayor, councilmembers, Rick Crownover, Assistant City Manager. The subject property comprises a vacant tract of land forming the northeast corner of Crawford Court and Crawford Avenue in the city of Granbury, Hood County, Texas. The property is generally triangular in shape and comprises a total of 7,928 feet. Crawford Court terminates immediately west of the subject property, and Crawford Avenue extends to Business 377. The subject property comprises 7,928 feet of surplus land owned by the city of Granbury. The site slopes away from the roadway and was previously an old component of Old Highway Number 10 owned by TechStot prior to the construction of Crawford Avenue. Surplus land is encumbered by utilities and easements, which will remain in place or relocated at the purchaser's expense. Most of those utilities belong to AT&amp;T, who have a station across the street. You notice on the survey, there is a storm drain that we have that dissects that property as well. So, the appraisal is an opinion of as-is market value conducted by an independent appraisal firm from Fort Worth. The final opinion value is developed in this appraisal. Surplus land is $17,838. Again, that's 7,928 square feet. One thing I might add, what's a little bit unique about this item, is due to the uselessness to develop independently abutting property in the same subdivision, Texas Local Government Code Section 272.001, Notice of Sale or Exchange of Land by Political Subdivision (EXCEPTIONS). B1, narrow strips of land or land that because of its shape, lack of access to public roads or small area cannot be used independently under its current zoning or under applicable subdivision or other development control ordinances. And C, the land or interest described by the subsections B1 and 2 may be sold to abutting property owners in the same subdivision if the land has been subdivided, or to abutting property owners in proportion to their abutting ownership, and the division between owners must be made in an equitable manner. Let me see. There's the survey. You can see it's a small triangular piece adjacent to the parent tract that fronts the lake. Oops, I guess I went too far. I'm gonna leave it right there. Suggested action, consider and authorize the City Manager to execute the sale of the city of Granbury surplus property to the adjacent property owner per Texas Local Government Code Section 272.001.B1 and C1 and 2. The surplus property is a vacant tract of land forming the northeast corner of Crawford Court and Crawford Avenue in the city of Granbury, Hood County, Texas. The property is generally triangular in shape and comprises a total of 7,928 square feet. Appraised value is $17,838. Section 272.001.B1 and C1 and 2. The surplus property is a vacant tract of land forming the northeast corner of Crawford Court and Crawford Avenue in the City of Granberry, Hood County, Texas. The property is generally triangular in shape and comprises a total of 7,928 square feet. Appraisal value is $17,838. That is the staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I might just add that we chose the appraiser. We've used Jonathan Archer for, as long as I've been here, to appraise property for situations such as this. And as we put in waterline utilities in the past, we had to buy a bunch of right-of-way and use the same adjuster. But I would like to say and give notice to the developer that they paid that bill based on our instructions to be able to facilitate this tonight, to bring it to you for consideration. So, not only are they willing to pay the $17,000-plus, they've already paid the $3,500. I think that's what the fee was, somewhere around there, for the appraisal. So, they got skin in the game at this point. So, anyway, thank you.
Mayor, the applicant is present.
Do we have other questions? Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Wadley?
I make a motion that we authorize the City Manager to execute the sale of this surplus property as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Vale. Motion was made by Mr. Wadley. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. It passes six and oh. I did not mention at the beginning here, something I generally do, is that all of this can be found on www.granberry.org/live. The presentation here tonight can be viewed on that. I'll also point out that if you go to granberry.org and go to the agenda, you can pull up tonight's agenda, and every slide that you see up here is in that agenda. You can read the appraisal, you can read the reviews that Ben had. There is, in my estimation, it's like 100% transparency, and I applaud the staff for doing that. We're now move to number eight, Citizen Comments on Matters Not on the Agenda. Ms. Walker, I've not received any. She don't have any? Can you make one up? We're running real... okay. All right. We have no comments on 8.0, so we will pass on that. So, we'll go now to the executive session. I now declare that the Granberry City Council is convened into open session, that all members are present. The City Council will go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. 551.071, consultation with attorney pending or contemplated litigation. 551.072, deliberation regarding real property. And 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. We are now in closed session. Okay. I now declare that Granberry City Council is reconvening. We reconvened in open session. There was no action taken in closed session, and all council members are present. Any comments, any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Birdwell, or... yes. Counselwoman Birdwell, go right ahead.
Sure.
Yes, I'm sure.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the City Manager to advertise for bids related to the recently-permitted East Wastewater Treatment Facility.
And I will second that.
Motion's been made by Counselwoman Birdwell, seconded by Councilman Vale. Do I hear any comments, questions? Call vote, or call a motion? I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. It passes six and oh. Thank you. Is there other business that we have to attend? There being no other business, we are adjourned.